Hello, everybody. Welcome to the January 25th meeting of the Board of Selectmen. I have everybody please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now I'm going to request a moment of silence for Abington resident Michael Sana. Michael was a lifelong resident of Abington. He played halfback for Abington's football team and years later went on to coach Abington Soccer Team. Michael was also a referee for a few of Abington's Spring League Soccer games and chairman of the Abington Financial Committee. He was a brilliant man and a great writer. He served in the United States Army and was part of the Intelligence Department where he was stationed in Germany. He was a columnist for Social and News and wrote the column, "Let's Talk About Food." He was a food scientist at Brady Enterprises for 51 years. Michael was most remembered by his family for his kindness, sense of humor, and love of classic movies. He was a man of faith who taught Sunday School and shared his love and devotion for the Lord. He will be missed by his family and friends. Thank you. Public announcements, any public announcements? Kevin?
I do not have any.
Jim?
I have none tonight, thank you.
Alex, any public announcements?
No, I don't.
Me neither, so we'll go to public comments. We do have a few people logged on to this meeting. Does anybody have any public comments about something that could be on the agenda tonight? Somehow give me a wave or let me know so we can unmute you.
No, no.
Okay, seeing none. Move on to our first public appointment. And that's the continued hearing, request for a commercial garage license for Jonah Vega, DBA Alliance Auto Service at 43 Highland Road. So Jonah, you're on with us?
Hi, yes.
How are you?
Make a motion in the meeting.
Say again.
All those in favor? Okay, meeting's reopened. So Jonah, last year here, I believe we had asked for three letters of reference and the insurance binder. Do you provide that?
Correct.
Okay, for the board, does everybody get that email, get those, that information?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Any questions from the board?
No questions here. I just want to say I appreciate the letters recommendation. I know we asked you for three. You submitted five and you also submitted the binder, the insurance binder, so I appreciate that. Want to say thank you.
Appreciate it.
Jim or Alex, any further questions?
No, sir.
Is there any public, any buddy from the public have any questions that we got in this hearing?
No.
Okay, did anybody from the board want to make a motion?
Make a motion to close the public hearing?
Is there a second on that?
I'll second it.
Okay, the public hearing is closed. All those in favor? Are unanimous, hearing is closed. Any other motions? With no motions on the floor, there's no way we can give you the commercial garage license. There's no member of the board has motioned for us to approve that.
I'll make a motion to approve the commercial garage license for Janaya Vega, DBA Alliance Auto Services at 43 Highland Road.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Seconded, okay. Now it's open for discussion. Kevin, any discussion? Any further discussion?
No, not at this time.
Alex?
Yeah, I still have an issue with the police report. We have done probably hundreds of licenses like this commercial garage license, auto repair license, used car license, liquor licenses. And I was on the board from 2015 to 18 and now back on the board now. And of all those licenses, I have never seen the police chief recommend a denial. And I, he has said that he wanted more information on other hearings and done other things and eventually they were approved, but I have to go with the police department on this. That's why we asked them to give us a background check and recommendation. And the police chief and the lieutenant has recommended that we don't approve this and I will not be voting to approve it.
Yeah, I agree with you, Alex, on pretty much everything you just said. It's, I know Chief Majewski and Lieutenant Sullivan did their due diligence as well as some of the detectives on this. So really, I feel the need to take their expertise as well.
Am I able to speak?
Sure, go ahead.
I just wanted to say that I do have a lawyer looking into that and the last thing that I heard about this case was that it was looking like I was, it was a mistaken identity. So, like I said, my lawyer is looking into it. I don't, I'm a superior court probation officer. So, I mean, I don't know. And I mean,
If I may, what I would suggest then, if you have an attorney looking into it, is that you withdraw without prejudice and refile again after some of these legal issues are straightened out. It's totally, we can take a vote tonight or you can withdraw and we take a vote tonight and we deny it, you can still refile.
I understand what you're saying, but it's like this, something that has not even been brought to my attention besides before I went to you is what's stopping me. Like I've never, this, this is, I've never even spoke to anybody on this case, many of your police friends, nothing. Even, even since you guys had all my information since September, nobody has even still reached out to me about this case.
I'm not reading that in the police report. We went on that at the last meeting. But that's my feeling on the, on the issue.
If we vote no on this, does she have a time limit as to when she can come back to apply again?
No, this isn't like a, this is not like a planning issue or zoning issue. This is some, you can come back, you could, you know, if you think this is something that could be resolved in a, in a reasonable amount of time, you could also continue it again for another week or another two weeks.
Yeah, there's, there's no timeline.
Yeah, and well, and the other part of it is,
And the courts are closed, yeah.
If you were to approve the license for whatever reason at any given point in time, if there was any actions beyond the scope of what the license allows, we could have a show cause hearing and bring that license and bring Janaya back in front of this board.
I would be open to, 100% open to that.
Any other comments, June, Kevin, Alex?
No.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. It's been seconded to approve the commercial garage license. All those in favor? All those opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Kevin, did you vote?
Yeah, that was a no, sorry.
Thank you. So that's, that's four, nothing, no. So the license was not approved.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Okay, next up on the agenda is the executive session. If everybody agrees, I'd like to move that to the end. We do have just a couple housekeeping items that shouldn't be too long. So to avoid having people log off and then log back on afterwards, we can move the executive session to the end. So next up on the agenda will be the Best of Abington Award. We gave Abington's Best Award to Bemis Drugstore. Us being, having the meetings on Zoom is something I wanted to do in person. We did it last Friday, but we did record it. So I'd like to show that now for the people watching at home. So Kevin, if you could cue that up for us. Kevin, talk to you with Abington Cam. Hi, thanks for joining us. We're here at Bemis Drug today to honor the years of service given by the Cox family to the Abington community. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen, I'd like to present them with the Abington's Best Award. For the past 115 years, the people of Abington have been very fortunate to have the great service of Bemis Drug and its wonderful employees. Sadly, this, this will end this month, but the Abington Board of Selectmen was to honor Bemis Drug, the Cox family and its workers for their great service to so many of Abington's residents, including those who have passed on. Fred Bemis purchased an existing pharmacy business in 1905, located across Brighton Street from the current location. It moved to its current location, formerly Franny's Garage, in 1968. Fred and later his brother E O ran the business until early 1960s. In 1950, Hugh and Drusilla moved, moved to Abington and started working as pharmacists at Bemis. They took over the business in the early 1600s while raising four children. One of these, Bill, is the current owner and manager. Another son, Richard, is a pharmacist in another state. Two of Bill's children, Amy and Matt, Amy and Matt work at Bemis and Bill's niece Patricia also. Some of Bill's grandchildren have also recently started working here. Although, many residents of Abington have worked at Bemis over the years. The customers of Bemis Drug have always received great service and assistance from the business over the years. The owners have gone out of bed at night to deliver medicines to ill customers. They have allowed regular customers credit and once gave lodging upstairs to a family displaced by fire. The staff knows their customers' needs and preventEVERSOL medication and provide advice on how to use their medicine. They have been sponsors for local sports teams and, and all other local charities. They have provided a community meeting place to the residents of Abington while shopping. There have been many changes at Bemis Drug over the years from the handwritten prescriptions, hand-prepared medicines, and well-loved soda fountain to the current computerized, modern pharmacy. However, the great and friendly service, assistance, and support for their customers and our community have remained the same. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Selectmen hereby present this Abington's Best Proclamation on behalf of the town of Abington and its residents, recognizing Bemis Drug and the Cox family with gratitude and appreciation for their service to the town of Abington. You have been a cornerstone and mainstay in our community and your closing will leave a void that will not be replaced. Thank you to Bemis Drug for all its staff and for what they have done for the town of Abington. We wish you all the best.
I first want to start by saying thank you. Thank you to everything you've done for this community, for my family, and for everyone here. I might get emotional because you guys have become like family, so. But like, you know, one door closes, another one opens and you and I have had multiple conversations over the years and now you really get to enjoy your family. You get to enjoy holidays, birthdays, and things you've had to miss because of being here for all in this community and our surrounding communities. So it is an honor and a very enormous privilege to present you a citation. Be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincere congratulations to Bemis Drug and the Cox family in recognition of their 116 years of dedicated, generous, and life and health impacting services to Abington and the surrounding communities. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune and continued success in all endeavors. Give it this 22nd day of January 2021 at the State House of Boston, Massachusetts, signed by Speaker Ronald DeLeo, sorry, Ronald Mariano, Speaker DeLeo is our former speaker, offered by me, your state representative Allison Sullivan. Congratulations and thank you.
I want to thank you all. First of all, I want to thank my wife and my family for allowing me to do this for so many years. And I want to thank the Board of Selectmen for presenting me with this Abington's Best Award and thank you, Allison, for the citation from the State House. Lastly, but most important of all, I want to thank the people of Abington who have supported us over the years, who have become friends as well as customers and who have allowed us to stay in business for as long as we have. And I just, I just want to introduce my family that's here right now. My wife, Eileen, my son, Matt, my daughter, Amy, and my niece, Patricia. They've all, they've all been integral parts of making this happen. So I want to thank them all. And again, I thank you all. Thank you very much. So Kevin, thank you. Thank you in Abington Cam for doing that, recording that for us so we were able to play that. And I just want to take a second again to thanks, to thank the Cox family for the years of service. I know that's really the epitome of small business. When you think small business, you think of places like Bemis Drug. And it's, it's sorry to see them go, but I'm glad that they're going to enjoy retirement and enjoy some well-deserved time off. Thank you again. Up next is a request for a committee to renovate the Beaver Brook Playground. Scott, you want to speak on this?
Actually, Kelly, if you can unmute yourself and then I'll just hear with you if you want to, you know, you want to go into this and explain to the board, that'd be great.
Yeah, so for those of you who don't know me, I'm Kelly. I work for the DPW and I'm also the Secretary of the CPA Committee. So as I'm sure a lot of you know, last year, the CPA Committee recommended that $150,000 be go towards the project to renovate the Beaver Brook Playground. This year, they are recommending that another $100,000 go to the same project. And then Jan and the other ladies can speak to this a little more in a minute, but I believe they will be doing some fundraising and having some other sources of income coming in to help with that project. So our request tonight, after speaking to Scott and the CPA Committee, is to possibly form a, an official committee to get that project kind of rolling and I was hoping, and I get, this is up to you guys and what, what you think is best, but to have something function similar to the Griffin's Dairy Committee in the sense that even though this is town property, that if we form this committee, whether it's just these three ladies and maybe a CPA and Park and Rec representative along with John Stone and myself to give them the authority to kind of make this decision with what it should be replaced with. They've done a lot of research and a lot of studies and playground representatives about ADA complacency, what should be put in there, recommendations of what other towns are doing. So kind of just getting your thoughts on what you think would be best as far as making that official so that way, you know, hopefully come summer, we can get this project moving a little bit.
Thank you, Kelly. Any questions from the board, guys?
How many people are you looking for to form this committee?
That I, I think would be kind of what you guys think is best. Like I said, these three ladies who have done most of the work at the right now instead of going to all the meetings, Jan, Kim, and Brooke. And I don't know if, if that's, this is something that needs some outside influence brought in or if you guys would just recommend that it's these three, like I said, with a representative from the Park and Rec Board, John Stone, myself, and the DPW, and maybe a CPA representative. Or if you think that you would recommend having a few extra people. That part, I'm not sure about. I was more thinking just something to help function, to give them the authority to make decisions for the project.
I'm sorry, tell me again who we have. We would have you, Kelly. And?
Jan, Kim Russell, and Brooke, and then John Stone, the DPW Director, and hopefully a CPA representative and a representative from the Park and Rec Board.
I think that's more than enough to.
Six people, yeah.
Seven, right?
Two, three, four, five.
I think you would have five voting, you know, five members of that board, of that committee, and then you would have the support staff of Kelly and John Stone, but they wouldn't actually be committee members.
Non-voting or?
Yeah, I think they would just be obviously support and to help them with any administrative stuff, but obviously it would be a committee that would have to hold you know, meetings, post an agenda, et cetera, but at least this way, you know, the, we're spending the town's money, so the town should have, you know, ample opportunity to see what's going on over there and, you know, listen in or make any recommendations or ask any questions.
Yeah, I would like to see some updates to the selectmen so people will see it on TV, on the updates and so we have Jan, Kim Russell, you said Brooke?
Yes, and they're also, Jan Leary is here. I don't know if, you know, if she wants to speak anymore to this, but they are here and.
Definitely someone from Park and Rec.
Yep.
And someone from CPA. Yeah, I'm good with that.
I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone may have. We have been working on this for quite a while and then the world stopped. So we continued to work on it, you know, behind the scenes and hopefully, once the spring hits, you know, granted that the first amount of money was allocated a year ago, you know, and obviously there is going to need to be some demolition and site work. We would like to get started, you know, because it's not going to be, you know, take down Beaver Brook and then there's a new playground within two weeks. So really, also for the townspeople to be able to see that the CPA money is being put to good use and not just being allocated and nothing happens to it.
Jan, are you on the CPA Committee?
No, I'm not. I used to be on the school committee.
How did you guys get to working together?
I have worked on a lot of different things for the town. I used to, I was on the school committee for about almost 10 years. I was the chair for half of that time. I was on the school building committee and I was the person that helped design our playground at the high school for the preschool. This is what I do in my real life, in my, you know, personal life. So I have known Brooke her whole life. And people just, there was talk of it and then we just started speaking and her and Kim reached out and said, you know, we'd love to have you help us. So that's how we came to be.
Thank you.
Would it just be for the Beaver Brook Playground or to be for any other areas there? I know there was talk about, you know, redevelopment for the whole area there. How would that react here?
We have spoken, there is, I know there is, you know, talk and people speaking about renovation of all of the Memorial Field Complex. And we have spoken to different people, Sean Riley, Pete Sorino, you know, as that's part of the, you know, the fields that are there, the school fields, yet there's also public, you know, things down there too. So we had, they are aware, they're very behind what we intend to do and they're, you know, I think it would be if they were, if this was happening simultaneously, I have no concerns working with a larger group.
No, understandable. And like I said, I'd love to see the playground get, you know, rebuilt. It is, it is older and serves its purpose. You know, you get down there, I mean, it is nice shaded, but there's a lot of trees that are rotting out and the fence and everything else.
Yep. And the playground itself is truly, it's a safety hazard to children. It really is. I don't know if anyone, it's shady, but I mean, the equipment itself is, it needs to be repaired and you can't repair it. It would be a waste of the town's money to put another wooden one there because they're not sustainable. In 20, 30 years, we'd be doing this all over again.
And that's exactly what it's been. It's been about 30 years.
I say my, my father helped build the one in Braintree, the wood playground, and I think lasted exactly the same, so.
Yeah.
But it's time to update it and you know, I just want to know how the boards would, not that there's two boards, but the committees would match, you know.
Yep.
How would it, would affect the Memorial Field redevelopment if we did do something? But I'm sure John Stone could, you know, oversee that.
John doesn't have enough to do.
I know, it's, he is, he wears a lot of hats, but you know, it's already, I guess, you know, seven people. I try not to get too many more people because, you know, try to keep the board somewhat smaller. But yeah, I'd be good moving forward with that as well with this board.
So what we would do, I'm assuming, is reach out to Park and Rec and have them appoint somebody and the same with CPA, reach out to them and have them decide who would be on the committee. So do we need a vote on this?
Yeah, motion to form the committee and then end the point, Jeanette, Kelly, Brooke, Kim.
I'll make a motion to form the Beaver Brook Playground renovation committee.
I'll second that motion. I'll amend it to appoint Jeanette, Brooke, and Kim to that committee.
And also, so we're forming a committee of five people?
Right.
Yes. Those three would be non-voting members.
John Stone and Kelly Johnson is non-voting members and then a representative from the Park and Rec Committee and a representative from the CPA Board.
Okay, so that motion's made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, that's unanimous. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You too. Thank you.
Next up is operational update and police department awards from Deputy, Deputy Chief Cutter. Deputy, I'll turn it over to you if you're on.
Yep, I am, Tim, thank you. Just wanted to say thanks to the town manager for inviting me here tonight and the Board of Selectmen for having me here tonight. And I'd like to just thank Representative Sullivan for participating in this with us tonight. What I wanted to go over with tonight is, and I had spoken to it about one of the other updates that I had done is our, we generally give out an Officer of the Year award once per year. And I wanted to honor our pick for this year. And that pick, you'll see center in the screen that we're sharing is Officer Brian Feely. Officer Feely is currently assisting us in the, in the role as an acting sergeant. Officer Feely passed the recent assessment center we had and from that, he was made an acting sergeant and we're pending his motion to sergeant. Officer Feely came to us in 2018. He came as an outstanding candidate as a police officer. He came to us with a bachelor's degree from Assumption College where he was present on the dean's list there. He also comes with a background in finance. And as I talk about some of the reasons why he was nominated as the Officer of the Year, it directly rates relates to his finance background. As far as the Officer of the Year Award goes, I put this out to basically my first line supervisors, our sergeants. And I asked those sergeants to nominate one or two or whoever they feel is, is, has met the standards to be given the Officer of the Year Award. Some of the things that I do ask for them to think about when they're doing the award is obviously to describe why they're nominating the, the particular officer that they're nominating. Obviously to describe why they're nominating the, the, that particular officer that they're nominating. Um, and how the officer has embodied our mission statement. Or an aspect of our mission statement. And I ask them to, um, what, uh, to identify what this officer has done to make Abington a better place. And what the officer has done to make the police department a better place. I also ask them to, uh, present to me, uh. Why, uh, how, how this particular officer is perceived amongst his peers, his peers, as I think those are all important aspects of this award. Um, so I would just, uh, I'll take a few minutes just to read through, uh, some of the excerpts from the nominations. That I received for Officer Feely. Um, before I do this, I would like to just take a moment to say that there were other offices that were nominated for this position. Um, however, Officer Feely received the most nominations for the position and he was subsequently chosen. And when I read, uh, some of the things that were said about him by his supervisors, um, I hope that you concur. Um. One of the things and I'll, this will kind of be taken in piecemeal, but he was, he was identified as a tremendous asset to the police department. Officer Feely not only does an outstanding job in his patrol, patrol duties. But he also volunteers himself for various other tasks and duties around the department. Officer Feely assisted Officer Sayers in writing our recent K nine grant. And I think maybe at the last, uh, at the last, uh, selectmen's update, I, I indicated that we were in a good spot to receive the grant. Well, I would like to just say that we didn't receive the grant. Um, we received a check for 27,000, uh, at the end of last week. And we have already begun the process of purchasing, uh, dog toys and, uh, and several other things for the new canine, uh, position. Um, but with that, uh. Uh, Officer Feely has also written several other traffic grants. Um, he's our lead, uh, officer as far as, uh, grant writing right now. And he, uh, he inst- he, he instantly takes a liking to writing grants. I was, uh, fortunate enough to have a conversation with him and he, and he expressed how much he really does enjoy doing that kind of work. And that's just a complete asset to us. And I, I believe that comes partly from his, uh, his bachelor's degree in finance that he obtained, uh, prior to getting here. Um, he has also written, uh, helped to write a crime suppression grant. Um, and I just received notice today that that grant was approved. I did talk about it at that, at one of the other, uh, selectmen's meetings that I, that I, we were getting that, but I got the final signed contract today. So. Thanks again to, uh, some of the work that, uh, Officer Feely has done. Um, Officer Feely also does a lot of our court discovery requests. He's intimately involved in that and, uh, and, and, um. Provides all that stuff for the district attorney's office. He's also, uh, taken the initiative to become one of our field training officers. He, uh, he, during this year, he trained, um, upwards of three officers during his, uh, patrol duties. Uh, when he was assigned to patrol. So, uh, he's a leader in the department. And he's someone that, um, the other officers look up to and they, uh, they, um, follow. Officer Feely is a mild-mannered, intelligent and diligent employee who is always positive in the workplace. And I think that's important. We all have good days and bad days. And Officer Feely seems to come in here, um, he's a, uh, level-headed, uh, officer and he's, um, he's always a positive person in the station. Um. Officer Feely, by assisting us with that grant writing, he has, um, assisted the town by, um. Uh, providing us with, uh, more resources to enforce traffic-related issues. And that is obviously one of our, uh, major complaints in town is traffic. And, uh, indirectly Officer Feely's work has helped to, um, assist us in that. Um, another sergeant wrote that Officer Feely has many responsibilities. He not only juggles all of these, but he does so with efficiency and without complaint. Uh, he's our discovery officer field training officer, mountain bike team. He's also a member of the mountain bike team. Um, and he's a member of the metro, uh, mountain bike unit. And, uh, just an, an example of what he could get called to, he was, uh, working some of the protests and rallies that were occurring, occurring in Boston this year. Um, as part of that metro law enforcement council team. So, uh, Officer Feely is always in the front lines of, uh, of, 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 um, of law enforcement. More importantly, he is dependable and, and can be counted on in serious situations. Um. The, one of the aspects of how does he embody the mission statement? Um, Officer Feely is a member of our, uh, group of officers that goes out and deals with our Plymouth County Outreach. And our, uh, dealings with, um, opioid addiction and overdoses, uh, in the town of Abington. So Officer Feely has been a, one of the leaders in that, uh, program and is, uh, routinely out knocking on doors, trying to get help to these people. Um, that may be suffering from addiction. Um. Uh, Officer Feely took over as a field training officer at the beginning of the year and that responsible, a ve- very large one. Having to mold, mold and train new officers, both unique and difficult. He is, one of the most unsung duties he accomplishes. On his own is discovery compliance, which is time constraining, stressful and difficult at times. Officer Feely is perceived by his peers to be dependable, approachable and knowledgeable. Um, so with all those things in mind, uh, I would like to take the chance to, uh, to say congratulations, Officer Feely. Thank you for the work that you've done in this department and, uh, and know that your work is valued by all of us here. As part of that, Lieutenant, would you find this officer handing him the award? You'll, um, notice sitting beside, um. Officer Feely is a plaque that goes up on the wall. Um, and it has our past recipients of the officer of the year award. Um, and we are going to present him with a, uh, his own individual award. So that he can display that to, uh, his family and his peers and, and whatever else. So once again, uh, if we could, I just have a, a round of applause for Officer Feely. Thank you very much.
Not quite the same, but it does.
Okay, the next thing I'd like to do and, uh, is I'd like to, um, honor and, uh, and just talk a little bit about, um. Detective Sergeant Ron Sweeney. Uh, Detective Sergeant Sweeney. Um, has been, uh, I'd like to recognize the service and his ultimate retirement. Ron Sweeney has been an asset to this department and I'll just take a brief moment to, uh, to go down and kind of highlight, uh, some of the things that feel, uh, are important about, um, his career. Um, this morning I took some time to peruse Detective Sergeant's personnel, the, the, pursue Detective Sergeant Sweeney's personnel file. In an attempt to capture his, uh, his 21 to 22 years in, in, uh, working as a police officer. And he also had an additional eight years of working, uh, as a Department of Corrections officer. Um, one thing that became glaringly important or apparent to me is that Detective Sergeant Sweeney is an exceptionally. Was, is exceptionally good at what he does. Detective Sergeant Sweeney began his career working, uh, as I stated with the Department of Correction and he was quickly hired by the Hull Police Department. Detective Sweeney rose to the position of detective with the Hull Police Department. And if there's one thing that is notable in his career, it is all the letters of commendations and thank yous that are besiege his personnel file. I mean, I, I was looking through it today and he, he has a, uh, a multitude of those letters in there. One of the most distinguished instances. Uh, Ron, I'm sorry. Remiss at that if you would. Thank you. One of the most distinguished instances in one of Detective Sergeant Sweeney's most prominent moments in his career was in 2001. When with complete disregard for his own safety, he subdued a knife-wielding suspect, which ultimately prevented. The serious injury to himself and his fellow officers. As a result of these actions, Detective Sergeant Sweeney was nominated for the prestigious George L. Hanner Award for bravery here in Massachusetts. Sergeant Sweeney became working, began, began working in Abington in 2008 and was assigned to our detective unit several years back. The quality and completeness of his work impressed me 12 years ago and it astounds me still today. I often try to relate things in the context of my personal life and family. And I can say without hesitation that if one of my family members were ever a victim of a crime. I undeniably would want Detective Sergeant Sweeney leading the investigation. I've watched as Detective Sergeant Sweeney has been in the forefront of some of the most grueling calls a police officer could respond to. And even through many, and even through many of these, his concern has never been for his own well-being. But for the concern of the victims in bringing a suspect to justice. As with anyone leaving this great department, a hole forms in their absence. What I can honestly say about Detective Sergeant Sweeney is when he walks out the door for the last time. A crater will form as he takes with him his knowledge, experience and perseverance. What will also be missed, and even though I'm often been the butt of his jokes, is Ron's quick wit and comedic relief. That he so eloquently spreads throughout the department. Thank you for making a smile for all these years, Ron. With all the help and with all the help from everyone here, I would like to thank you for your service and wish you a healthy and prosperous retirement. As part of this, um, you know, uh, represent, Representative Sullivan, um, was so gracious to, uh. Even to, uh, pull over her, um, citation that she got from the House of Repet- Representation, House of Representatives. And, uh, she will, uh, take over from it for that. Go ahead, Allison. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Chief. I do apologize for my voice, Sergeant, as you know, as you can hear. That's the reasons why I'm not standing there with you right now. Um, the deputy chief has a citation from both the governor and lieutenant governor in recognition of your service, um, to law enforcement. And congratulations on your retirement. He also has a citation from myself and I'll like to read it. And don't worry, I sound worse than I actually feel. Here, hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincere congratulations to Sergeant Ronald Sweeney. In recognition of his over 21 years of dedicated service in law enforcement in the towns of Hull and Abington. The entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good fortune. And continued success in all endeavors. Given this 31st day of January 2021, the state House of Boston, signed by, and I won't mess it up this time. Speaker Ronald Mariano and myself. And congratulations on this well-deserved retirement. You'll be truly missed in our town.
Thank you, Allison. Um, I would like to, uh.
Deputy Chief, sorry. I just want to say congratulations for the officer of the year too. Thank you for that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, and I would just like to take a moment just to, uh, read, uh, the citation, uh, delivered from, uh. Governor Charlie Baker and, uh, Lieutenant Governor Karen E. Polito. Head of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Sergeant Ronald Sweeney. On behalf of the citizens of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, I am pleased to confer upon you this governor's citation. In reconi- recognition of your nearly 22 years of total service for a law enforcement agency. Which includes a service to Hull Police Department from 1999, 2008. For the, uh, service to the Abbotton Police Department from 2008, 2021. This 21st day of January in the year of 2021, by the governor and the lieutenant governor. Okay, so with that, I would like to, uh, that will be the end of, uh, my presentation. I, uh, I thank you again, um, for having us here tonight. And, um. I will, uh, hang on, uh, Scott, if you, uh, if we're gonna meet later or whatever we need there.
Yep, stay on.
Okay, thank you everyone. Thanks, Allison.
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you, deputy. Thank you, Allison. And thank you to, um, Acting Sergeant Feely and Sergeant Sweeney. Uh, both great officers and we're lucky to have had you Sergeant Sweeney and to have Sergeant Feely. So, thank you again. Um, Scott, you're gonna go with the town manager's report?
Uh, yeah, I'll, um, paraphrase some of what's in here, uh, just to keep moving. Uh, vaccine clinics are, so, uh, currently in the Board of Health, they, they have a series of vaccine clinics scheduled. Uh, they have one on Wednesday. It's a phase one clinic at the high school. Um, it's obviously for phase one el- eligible individual. It's by appointment only. Uh, so if you fall under that category, uh, please reach out to the Board of Health to see if you can make an appointment. Uh, they had about a hundred doses. But there has been a lot of interest in this. This is one of the, you know, uh, many regional centers that you've been hearing about. Uh, the Board of Health does have a fairly, a very robust, comprehensive plan in place right now. Uh, for, uh, phase two. And subsequent phases, uh, right now, they're just waiting on, uh, the okay, as you probably heard today. Phase two will start in February 1st, um, and they're ready to go. We just need the vaccine. Uh, track management working group, we're soliciting quotes, quotes for that right now. Once the quotes are in, I will reach out to all the group members so we can get together and we can review, um, current, you know, process. Current services and, and how we can improve on them and, uh, what if any changes we need to make. Uh, capital planning committee met. Uh, Tim, as you know, um, they are going to meet again in February 2nd. Uh, at that time, they'll put together a chair and a vice chair and review some policies. Um, that will, you know, go forward with, you know, how that, how that committee will function. As far as, uh, you know, when they expect information, what kind of information they expect from the departments. Uh, they'll formulate a five-year plan and, um, you know, present that plan annually. But they'll also present a, um, you know, recommendation for, you know, the annual budget. Um, going on with that, the budget review process has begun. We continue to work on the FY22 annual budget. We're going through another round with our department heads to refine their requests. We, um. We're awaiting the cherry sheet numbers. You know, I think they're due out in another week or so. Lieutenant Governor has indicated that there will be slight increases, which is a surprise. Um, but even if they are on the initial cherry sheet, that doesn't necessarily mean that they'll be there. Um, when the, you know, uh, final budget comes out, but it is a, um, you know, it is some positive news. And as we've been going through our. Um, you know, our second round, we're, we're actually, you know, we're, we're coming up with some positive news. We're getting closer on our gap, um, in, in, you know, refining the budget. So we have a ways to go, but it's, um, you know, it, it's all good work. Um, finally, we're exploring the possibility of police dispatch regionalization. Uh, as you're aware, the Abington Fire Department is currently dispatched through our regional 911 call center. Known as the Holbrook, uh, Regional Emergency Communication Center. Recently, Chief Nuttall and Deputy Chief Cutter and I, we met down at the call center, uh, took a look around. Uh, we met with the director and we discussed, you know, what sort of opportunities were there for, um, for the police department. Um, initially it looks great. There's no upfront cost to the town if we should make that decision. Um, all the costs associated with the move will be covered under a grant. Additionally, any costs associated with the administration, um, we pay an annual fee to that. Um, those, those costs will get rolled into, um, into this. They're all covered. So. Um, years one, two and three will cost us nothing. And not only will it cost us nothing, but we're currently paying, um, administrative fees of $185,000 a year just for fire. Um, so those fees will actually get rolled in. So it, it, it essentially it saves us in the first three years, 185,000 a year out of a line item or what's in our budget now. Um, year four, our cost will be 185. So it's sort of like buy one, get one free in year four. Um, year five, it bumps up to 300 and after that. Um, there's no, you know, right now, it's just, you know, we're talking, it's, it, it's in a feasibility stage. We're kind of looking into it. I'm hearing a lot of positive things, but I do want to have an opportunity in February to have, uh, Chief Nuttall come in. Uh, Chief, Deputy Chief Cutter come in and address it with the board, just to also have a chance for us to, um. You know, look in at all the pros and cons and, and, and sort of weigh them out and, and get any public opinion or public feedback that we may. And just do it in a forum with the board. If we do decide to go forward, we will do so sooner than later. It probably happened at the end of February. Um, the, the grant cycle is, um. Uh, starts the first week of March. I believe we have to have the application in. And it, you know, if we decide to go forward, um, with the, at least with the initial application and the initial grant. Uh, you know, there's always, um, you know. We don't have to stay. There's always a way that, you know, there, there'll be a certain period of time, if we give them the proper notice, that we could. Go back to doing things the way we are right now. But, uh, again, we're in the early, early stages of it and we're gonna continue on looking into it. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Scott. Does anybody have anything for the town manager?
Um, I just have one on that, the, uh, the regionalization. Um, you said it was a grant. Will this grant apply to all the regional centers or is it specific to just this, this one Holbrook one?
It, well, it's, it's the grant that Holbrook is seeking.
And you said it was a state grant, right? I mean, is it, can we, could we get that for any regional center or is it just Holbrook?
I'm not applying for the grant. Holbrook is applying for the grant. So this is a grant that, that is eligible to a, to a regional center. I suppose if I went down to Duxbury, I could ask them if they'd let me in, but they're full. but they're full or pretty close to full. So, and this is where we have our fire. That's why we reached out to them. But whether, there are grant opportunities for all regional call centers. And it's competitive. I know, and the only reason I know this is because of the involvement I had when they were setting up and expanding on the one down in Duxbury. Again, it's, you know, they all apply for funding, they apply for grant money. But I'm not, or the town of Abington's not applying. The town of Abington's not seeking this grant. It's actually Holbrook that will be, Holbrook Call Center that will be seeking it.
Okay, I just, yeah, no, I just want to know that. And, you know, obviously, when we talk about further, you know what I mean? Is it something that we have to, like, does it go out to bid? Do we can just pick or, you know, can we hear from the other regional centers? I mean, is it something that we're just, you know, we're just going with one? I'd also, so when the time comes, I mean, I've always been a proponent of doing our own regional dispatch here. You know, rather than sending, you know, jobs and money out of the town, let's bring it in, you know what I mean? But I guess suffer another day.
We don't, yeah, I mean, that'd be started from scratch to do one here. I don't know, certainly, you know, I think that's a question that Chief Nuttall can answer. And certainly, we'd be happy to have representative from Holbrook. He offered to come in and speak to the board so I can line that up. And for that matter, I could probably get the representative from, or at least comments from Duxbury's Rock Regional Center.
Yeah, you know, because I know there's what, I mean, at least three or four in the area now. It just, you know, and if there's grants out there, it seems like something that maybe the town should may try to get a grant themselves, you know? But sounds good.
I don't think it's as easy as it sounds to set up the center and starting, we're starting with nothing. They just pumped, I don't know how many million into Holbrook. And I know they just pumped probably ten or fifteen million into Duxbury just on equipment alone. And I don't know where we would house one if we were to entertain that. But it's certainly, you know, it's something to have a part of the conversation.
Yeah, definitely. We've got plenty of empty buildings in this town. We're already dispatching in police, so, you know? I don't think it's that big of a thing, but I think it's something we should look at. You know, let's open the discussion up a little bit more when the time comes.
Scott, could I just ask a couple of questions on that? I know we're not discussing it tonight, but, so we're paying now about a hundred and eighty-five thousand a year that's budgeted for the fire, correct?
I believe so, yeah.
So up until the fifth year, it's really technically not costing us anymore. And in the fifth year, it would cost us about a hundred and one thousand dollars, if my math is correct. And what are we doing now with the police? Are they officers that are doing?
They're, right now, there's civilians in there.
Good. But in the past, we've had officers.
Yeah, and again, that'll be something that I think, you know, the deputy can answer better. I think there is a split and, you know, we can get into that a little bit more when we have the bigger discussion of it. But yeah, right now, we are able to have it a hundred percent civilianized.
Okay, so I see Deputy Chief is still on. So when we have this discussion, I'd like to see the numbers of what it's costing us now.
Yeah.
Not tonight, obviously, but when we do have this meeting. Even if it's civilians, I mean, we're paying the civilians, obviously. So I'd like to see what it's costing now, what it cost in the past. I know when we had officers doing it for quite a while, we had civilians and we got rid of the civilians and went back to officers and now we're back to civilians. But I'd like to see the cost. And I think you're probably going to see that we're spending a hundred and one thousand now.
Or more.
Probably more, no. So anyway, I'd like to see some numbers before we get to that more.
If I could just interrupt and just make two comments, that's all. Alex, we are currently sharing the responsibilities between civilian and officers now. So we have some positions that are filled with civilians that has allowed us to put an officer on the road. And we have some positions that are still filled by officers. And then the other thing to Selectman DiMazzio, Kevin, just currently where our nine-one-one calls are already going to the Holbrook Dispatch. So that was done probably two years ago under the prior Town Manager. Our nine-one-one calls were transferred over to Holbrook. So all our wireless nine-one-one calls, which are predominantly our emergency calls, are already going to Holbrook now. So I just wanted to clarify those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think this should probably be on the agenda possibly for the next meeting if we have to have an answer. By March fourth is the deadline. So I'd like to see it on the next agenda if we could.
Yeah, we should probably try, I think our next meeting would be, what, February sixth or seventh? Whether that Monday is, I guess it'd be seven. If it's available for the deputy chief and the fire chief to have them available, that'd be great.
Yeah, I believe it's, it's like it's February eighth. So I will reach out to them all. I'm sure we can get them here.
Yeah, well, as we discussed earlier, Scott, we'll post a Zoom link on the Selectman's website ahead of time to, just to make sure people can get on, should they want to. Should we still be on Zoom, assuming we are?
Yeah, I think we will be.
Also, we're going through a lot of, you know, the operational study right now with the police too. So it's another big change coming, I guess, in the, you know, February. We're also going to start the transition looking for a chief. So, you know, timing is kind of tough for it, but, you know, let's have a discussion and see where it goes.
Okay. Anything else for the Town Manager? Oh, also, Scott, I don't want to put too much on the agenda for the next time if we're going to have that forum-type thing. But the, the things that Alex had mentioned about the donation bins in town, have you been working with Marty and the Board of Health on that? Or I know it's a crazy time for the Board of Health right now and I hate to ask him anything.
Exactly, yeah. It really isn't a good time to bring him up to a meeting. I mean, he does have, he did offer up and he did already send them to me a list of, you know, regulations. But it really, it's something that the Board of Health can and should, you know, institute. It's easier for them to do it, but I will bring them to this board so you can review it. I just haven't wanted to drag Marty to this board just because he's already going, you know, about six weeks a week.
As long as the Board of Health's working on it, I mean, we don't need to step in. I just want to make sure it's on their radar somewhere because, you know, we're getting the complaints and we're just letting them know.
And I did, and I told Alex that I would get those, a copy of, because like I said, he's already sent them up to me, some draft regulations. So I'll get them over to you guys this week so you can take a look at them.
Okay, anything else? Okay, with nothing else, we're going to look, I'm going to look for a motion to go into executive jet, executive session per Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-nine, subsection twenty-three B, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with union personnel and not to come back to open session.
Make the motion.
Again.
Okay, roll call vote, Kevin?
Yes.
Alex?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Okay, Chairman votes yes, so we're in executive session. Thank you, everybody.